It says in here, no outdoor P A or music permitted.
Right, right. We don't have a, uh, they used to have one in that, we don't have it.
But, but you do know that if you violate any of these, we can take your business license. You understand?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Ross?
Another thing too, that I know a lot of times that we have this, it says all work to be done inside the building. And a lot of times people do not follow this regulation. Somebody pulls up there, oh, well, I'll just change your tire real quick out here, I'll do this or something, or do some little bodywork or something outside. So, I know it's hot and everything, but everything should be done inside so that the neighbors do not have to see that.
Yeah, that was the only stipulation I think that they said with it, like something simple, like a flat tire or something like that. We could do it, I mean, I understand that they do not want it outside and that's fine. As long as we can get it in, get it done, I, I just want to be open right now.
So, you know, somebody drives by and you're doing work outside, then I'm sure that you'll be getting fined.
Right, so, so let's get this twisted, that does not include like if I have to jump a car to get it in, hopefully that does not consider us working on it.
No, actually working on the car.
We got a motion.
No, we need a motion.
We need a motion, what's the motion for?
To adopt.
To adopt.
As amended.
Got a motion to adopt, hold on, do I, do I have a motion to adopt?
Some move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes, sir. Okay. Normally I, you know, normally, I guess in my nineteen years here, I've always just pretty much gone along with planning. I mean, yeah, with planning, but this time, and I have nothing against an, an auto repair business, nothing against it. But I do have some major concerns about putting an auto repair business in the middle of a residential neighborhood. You've got residential on the north, residential on the south, residential on the west, and residential half of your property on the east. What's there now? What, what's in that business now, this residential area now, or that property now that requires barbed wire?
There's nothing there now, what, what was there? It was a storage facility, it's the whole, uh, area was a storage facility that the owner had, he owned the whole block, so he barbed wire his own, his whole system. Before, where I was at, he used it as a storage for his personal business to help, he owns multiple businesses, he stores all his equipment and stuff in there. So I guess before they had, uh, they had a brick and enter or something like that.
I'd hate to live in a neighborhood that requires barbed wire or just, you know, that's in it, I just, I'm opposed to it.
Well, at the same time, that's the, um, like I said, and prior is that, you know, as we all know, that the, our car is our second biggest investment. So when people bring in their cars, I want to protect it at all costs.
Well, you know, if you put in a lot, I, I, I personally think if you start, you start allowing commercial businesses in a residential neighborhood, it's gonna be like dominoes, and they're all gonna start falling, so. I'm gonna be opposed to this, Maury, I'm sorry.
Can we clarify something? I think the area that's right around, I understand that you've designated or, or stated that there's residential, but directly surrounded where he is, almost all of that is some form of commercial. He's in between a, a lot, where on one side there's like a little office, a little office building or something they've used.
Well, my map shows, my map shows this all to be residential except for the, the C three on Pike Avenue.
Not right around where he is, right next to him is the storage, the other side of him is an office, and in front of him is where Dollar General is.
And you got one of the residents saying that he doesn't want an auto repair or, has he got something else in a residential neighborhood, and his, his property's what, I don't have many feet from it, so.
That is true, and with all, with all due respect to both of them, we mailed out the notices and the other people haven't come, and so, I get their complaint, I do.
Okay, all right, Ms. Robinson?
Here's the thing, as fellow council members know, I don't go alone with car lots, nor car repairs. But, looking at this facility, there seems to be enough space or garages for everything to be inside and not necessarily have a whole bunch of cars outside. Now that's how I look to me. So there should not be a whole bunch of cars outside, that the cars, this facility is large enough, look like the cars can be inside.
Are you gonna be using both, both buildings? No, she, uh, landlord uses the other building as her office.
Ms. Ross?
We have a resident here, can we hear what, I'd like to hear what the resident, you'll have to come up to the microphone though.
Come up to the microphone.
They have fifteen to eighteen cars sitting on the property right now that's not inside. Some of them are wrecked, and like I say, I've got pictures here on my iPad. But, I don't have a problem if they had one or two cars there, working on one or two cars, and people bring them in, drop them off, pick them up in the afternoon, they'd have two or three. If the lot was cleared at night, and they were working on cars, I don't have a problem with that. But it looks like a junkyard, right now, if you drive by it, it's not very aesthetic to the eye, okay, it's just, it's, it's not a good idea. My dad, I have a garage behind my house, and my dad worked on cars, he built it from World War II ammunition boxes, and it's bigger than my house. But he irked on one or two cars at a time in the forties and early fifties. And I don't have a problem with car repair and what he does, I think it's a great service. But you can't have twenty cars sitting out on that parking lot all night long, every night. And then, one, Twenty Fourth and Pike, I think, that sits out there, those cars have been out there for four or five years, and they've never moved, and it's an eyesore. And we're trying to clean up North Little Rock, you know, down at the roundabout at Pike Avenue back in there, it's beautiful, and the hut houses are putting in, and it's moving, you know, that way, so. I'm just kind of against it.
Thank you.
You bet.
One more question, do you, no. Do you have space to put the autos inside at night? Cause we do have another, uh, you know, repair shop here in North Little Rock, that they are required to clear the lot at night, that is one of the requirements. So you have to have everything inside or repaired?
Well, the cars that are outside are outside due to the simple fact that we have equipment that was put inside, and then have special cars that, high dollar cars that are inside. So the cars that are outside, we may have enough room, like I say, I know it has enough room for at least eight cars on the inside, and then of course you may have customers may not fix their cars up to the next day. So it's just, uh, from our ordinance of where we was at before, it was, uh, due to rotation, all they require for us to make sure we rotated, make sure they weren't broke down, make sure they didn't have windows broken out, anything like that. Of course, a lot of times down there, that's the reason why we wanted, needed to move because, uh, the vehicles down there was getting vandalized. Even if they was there for a day or night, they was getting vandalized. So of course that, when I seen the property and seen that it was secure for my customers and their vehicles, that's the reason why I went down there. So of course, the answer to your question is, I probably can get majority of them, I would try to maintain them if, if, um, if y'all will allow them just to get started.
Ms. Ross?
The other factor I think that's being overlooked is, right now, they have been shut down for about a month. So the vehicles that need work, those, they probably would have already been gone, but he's not able to do the work, which is why the vehicles are sitting there at this point. He's not in the business of just keeping them or storing them.
Mr. Baxter?
You talk about previous, where, where was your previous, uh, business again?
Uh, twenty-six fifty-five Pike Avenue, Pike Avenue shops.
No, I think you asked what was in that location that he's moving into?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Where was your business located previous to where you're driving in twenty-six?
What, what was, what was the statement you made about, about the outside storage again?
Outside storage?
No, no, the young lady.
He's not just storing those vehicles just to be keeping them, he's been shut down for about a month now, trying to give them this process of the, give them special use permit to use the property. So the vehicles that need repairs, he's not able to operate the business, so they have to sit there until he can get them out, so he's not in the business to just keep them.
Okay, let's, Charles, start wrapping this up a little bit, Mr. Taylor? Somebody give me a mic.
Oh. Thank you. Um, I, I've, uh, I've, I've seen, and, and I'm all for, uh, entrepreneurship and, 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 uh, uh, a man or individual using his skills and his craft to take care of themselves and their families. I've seen some of these, some of these car repair shops that we've allowed, um, and, and in defense of the council members and, and the gentlemen, uh, the residents, um, we need to find a way to make sure that, that there's no clutter outside, we've got one down on here on Washington Avenue that's just a mess. I mean, every time I drive by it, it's, 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 it's a bad deal. Um, in fact, the one, did I take mine to, over on Alexander Road, I mean, he's, he's a great mechanic, but man, you, you pull up over there and there's cars everywhere. And I know that's probably the nature of the business, but we have, we probably need to find a way to, for you, you and your customers to find a way to have a better stacking system, or better way for them to bring the vehicles to you where you can actually get them into the shop, and then get them out. So, so it could, it could remain as, as, as clean and as respectable of a business, and not be such an intrusion into that, into the community. I mean, the building's there, it's already a shop, um, but I, I think we need to find a way to make sure that it stays as clean as possible.
Do you want to hold that and, and try to figure out how to, to get where you want to be? I don't know if we can do that on the floor right now.
It, I mean, that's, that's up to the applicant, I mean, I, you know, there's, there's some concerns with, with the, with the members, so, um.
Ms. Ross?
I, I'd just like to make this recommendation, we do have one that, you know, that, that they are not allowed to leave any cars out at night, no cars, the lot has to be cleared off at night. I don't know if giving a set number, which this is always a move at Target trying to enforce this, like, say, you can have, you can have five cars left out overnight, that's it. So that's, that, you know, I've got the floor, hold on. So, you know, you could, you could put in a number, then you're having code to go in and enforce it, but there's a possibility, it's just, I understand what they're saying, they don't want it to look like a junkyard. You know, so if you cleared the lot every night, then it was done, or if they had three cars out there left overnight, but then you could have somebody regulating it, and that brings in codes, so I'm just throwing that out there.
I don't know if it's important or not, but I think we can agree to five, if you can do five, you can get rid of, make sure there's only five out there.
Ms. Robinson? Yeah, what's your name, ma'am?
Margot Warner.
Margot Warner, are you a partner in this, or?
I'm actually a friend of his, but I'm also a deterrent.
Okay, thank you. You got that, Caitlin?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, what's your pleasure, Mr. Taylor?
Oh, I'm, uh, I, I will happily accept the friendly amendment to, uh, to restrict it to five, five vehicles being stored outside.
Overnight.
Overnight.
Okay, we got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we got a motion by Mr. Taylor, a second, no more than five vehicles left outside overnight, on the motion to amend.
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
I?
No.
You want a motion to adopt?
Some move.
Second.
A motion to adopt is amended, on the motion.
Ross?
I just have one thing to say too. And this is to the residents, the city can't be the eyes twenty-four seven, thirty-sixty, so they're, you know, if this does pass, it's gonna be up to you to help the city enforce that five car rule overnight, so. Just want to make sure that we need your help, yes.
Okay, White?
Can we just put this on hold and see if they can do it first?
You gotta approve it before they can open up?
If they could get to five, you know, can they get to five cars out there on front? If they can't, then, you know.
Yeah.
You can't open without approving it.
Yes.
And then, but if they violate it, then you can take your business license away from them.
He's, he's committed to the five, and what, what, what I'll commit to, because I drive there quite often, just like I did with the young man down here.
On Broadway, that if he don't do what he's supposed to do, then we'll bring him back here and we'll, we'll revoke that business license, but, but, uh, I, I have the support of this council to get that done. Our, our job is to, to protect, uh, well, to, to allow him to do business, but also to protect the, our constituents, and if he says five, then we're gonna hold him to five. But I promise you, I, I, I have no power with bringing him back and saying that you didn't do what you were supposed to do.
That's fine.
Okay, we got a, we got a, Ms. Ms. Ross says yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Oh nineteen eighty-three, Councilmember Taylor?
Please call it.
An ordinance allowing a special use to allow a storage container as an accessory structure, and a C three zone for certain real property located at forty-eight hundred East Broadway Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
Motion to suspend.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Ms. Ross? Go.
My concern with the, the storage containers is, you know, and I've been assured that you, this is one that you can't necessarily see from the street, and so it's containing everything, and I understand that the, that they need additional storage, but I don't want to see this container filled up and then more products show up that can't even fit in the container, so then you've got this, and then you've got additional, so. I would like to add that absolutely no outside storage of any appliances or anything, keep it clean. Now, you can word that for me.
Let's get a second on first.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, we got a motion to second.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Is this your property, Steve? Does that create a problem with you?
It's, uh.
Come up the microphone.
We do have some outdoor storage there periodically, and the reason we're getting the container is to get the majority of it in, kinda like the other deals, it's like saying it's the ocean blue. Well, in general it is, but there's some brown and some green. So, can we get it all in there all the time? Uh, we would, I talked to Alderman or Councilmember Ross earlier today about this very concern, and talked with the owner of the business, uh, about putting up a privacy fence to shield or screen any that might be still out, but clearly the reason that we're having the storage container is for security purposes. So, our goal is certainly to get it in the container, uh, but there are times when there is some stuff in the yard, so it'd be a little bit of a hardship to either get it in or one of the two locations, uh, and we would, we would request or ask, would a, would a wooden privacy fence that would screen anything that might be outside be acceptable?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to defer to the council members of this ward, as far as, as far as the outdoor storage on it, cause I know that that's been an issue in the past.
Well, it, it, it's, um, I mean, it's been in operation for quite some time, and, and they've, they've had, had, uh, um, items stored outside. I think what, what, what the applicant's doing is, 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 uh, making his best attempt to move everything into an inside facility, so. I'm, I'm perfectly okay with a, with a, with a fence just to provide some screening.
Ms. Robinson?
This is legislation, but saying no outside storage?
No.
Somebody can, or I'll just talk about, well, right now, uh, the motion to amend to include a provision of no outdoor storage has passed eight to nothing. Um, or eight to zero, so if the ordinance is adopted as amended and the amendment has passed, then it would be no outdoor storage unless you all want to amend it again.
Well, we can expunge that vote.
Yeah, or expunge the vote, or add a privacy fence, whatever you all want to do, but as it stands now, unless you all vote again, if you pass the ordinance as amended, it'll include that.
I move, move to, to, uh, to expunge the vote.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, we're voting in, from the people voting in favor of that, to expunge that vote on the motion to, yes? We're, we're removing, we're undoing the amendment, right, undoing the amendment.
Okay, on the motion, Ross? White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Passes.
All right, now what's your pleasure?
Um, move to amend to provide, uh, privacy fence screening. Like, I guess I'll, I'll defer to, to Planning Director to clean that up for me.
Well, to straighten out a couple things, uh, properties on C three are not allowed to store anything outside. So that comment was in there as a reminder to the applicant and the property owner that it's not allowed. So if you guys are wanting to allow it, you'd have to add a condition to say, allow outdoor storage behind a eight-foot wood privacy fence or something like that. But even though you expunged it, it's still in the zoning ordinance as C three, you can't do outside storage.
So, we can't help you there, Steve, anyway?
We're good, we're good either in the building or in the storage.
Okay, well, or the only way we can do it is to add the fence for, and put, and allow outside, uh, storage.
Correct, if you were wanting to do that, you could add it as a condition.
Can we do that later?
Do it anytime you need it to, yes.
You want to think about that, Steve, and then if you want to allow outside stores and spend the money to put up a privacy fence, you can?
We, we may need to know where, I mean, we don't want to store it out front with the fence or something, you know.
That's a great point, now we're not storing any out front, there's a little on the side, probably dozen washing machines, uh, and it looks bad, uh, you know, I, I think a privacy fence would certainly do it. It, uh, many times it's just a part there that, that we're kinda hanging on to in order to salvage that part.
It needs screening, it needs the screening.
It needs to be screened.
Yeah.
Well, you want, you want to make an amendment to allow outdoor storage as long as they have a privacy fence installed?
Well said, Mayor.
Okay, you got that, Amy?
Second.
We could add in the rear yard, so then we make sure we don't get a fence in the front yard or something.
Okay, okay.
In, in, in the rear of the property. Mr. Baxter?
Well then, why don't you strike the, the requirement for a hundred feet away, if you're gonna have additional stuff, things, items, outside of the container, just delete that whole thing, just throwing that out there.
Let's let our council look at it real quick and see what she says.
Okay, right now, I'm a little confused, I was still working on, um, Councilmember Taylor's amendment, which would be that outdoor storage, um, is allowed in the rear of the property if the owner constructs a privacy fence, and Councilmember Baxter, I, I don't know, like, do we have a second on that amendment, or are we doing something else now too?
Well, we got a motion and a second, so.
Okay.
I think he was just trying to help you, he was being a lawyer.
I'm sorry.
A little bit.
Okay.
Now, I'm s-
Is, is what he says the same thing as what you were gonna say?
I mean, basically, I, I, again, you're saying, and I, vote on that amendment.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't keep up with you all, I'm sorry, I was trying to write.
I scared to death when I put on my lawyer hat too, so. Now we got a motion and a second, Ms. Ross?
Okay, so, are we voting on the privacy fence, or what are we voting on right now?
We're voting allowing outdoor storage if there's a privacy fence.
Now, is that a privacy fence around the whole property?
In the rear, in the rear.
In the rear.
In the rear.
And she said that.
Okay, so that is on all sides, or, because, I mean?
I think it's drawing from the half chance that was required.
So. What, what's the difference?
The container might be able to be seen from the street either from half or Broadway, so. Really big, potential privacy.
It's all right. The same one I got, isn't it? What's that? That ten-foot private, oh, ten-foot fence all the way around. Always ten foot high.
There's not a lot of visibility to that area as it is, it's a very small area on both the Broadway side and the Alpha side, between the two properties.
Okay, well, what you've got the red drawl is where you, you think you want to put a privacy fence?
That's where we would propose to put it, we think that would accomplish the purpose of screening any, uh, thing that wasn't able to get in the container for some reason.
Do you own forty-seven oh five?
Yes, sir. This entire lot is on commercial, and forty-seven oh five is our property, Ms. Turner lives there. When we went to planning with it, we had a letter from her saying she did not object, in fact, she, there's some, some pass through, uh, back there from forty-eight oh two, and that she kinda liked the idea that that container would be sitting back there and cut down on anybody cutting the corner.
Where are we, where are we, Caitlin?
Um, if you want to-
We got a motion and a second on the amendment, so we're voting on the amendment.
Yes.
What's the amendment?
The amendment is, but Sean, this, the amendment's gonna have to make you-
The way it's worded now is we require a fence on four sides of something.
Right.
Of the rear yard, so wherever the rear yard is, we'd have a eight-foot wood fence on all four sides.
Right.
Cause, well, we need to protect from all neighbors, so there's the, the neighbors behind it and on the side of it, and even the renter, you know, we, we should be protecting the renter from looking at storage of washing machines.
And that takes Mr. uh, just to agree that he will make sure that all equipment is inside, is building, or is intact, and they're all being allowed.
Do you want to withdraw your motion to amend? Do you want to withdraw your second? All right, the amendment's been withdrawn completely, Mr. Baxter?
So I go back to what I was saying earlier, the diagram shows ten feet from two different structures, but the legislation says it'll be a hundred feet. Is that just an error? And that's where I was going to with the additional storage, if you're gonna have stuff outside, then, I mean, stuff's gonna be closer than whatever the number's supposed to be.
Okay.
Is this a structure here? Is that, is that a hundred feet? Oh, it's a typo on the legislation, a hun- okay, ten feet, thank you all. Okay, ten feet. I'll fix that, thank you, uh, Councilmember Baxter.
We're gonna consider that a scribbler's error, okay, that will be considered a scribbler's error, it should be ten instead of a hundred, Ms. Ross?
So now can we unexpunge the expunged amendment, because that's back to where it started?
Well, we don't need that amendment.
Because it's prohibited anyway.
We don't need it.
Okay.
Let's just approve the legislation as is, do we have, we have a motion? And we, we have a second, as written, on the motion.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Wow. All that, first of all, that was, what was that? I gotta go home and straight to bed, y'all are wearing me out.
Oh nineteen eighty-four, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance approving the application of Park Hill Pump Incorporated for a private club to be located at forty-six oh eight J F K Boulevard, North Little Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
I'm gonna hold it after that. See how easy this stuff is, you guys? Read it, hold it. All right, um, I didn't have anybody sign up for public comment, did you? Okay, any council member have anything, Ms. White?
Mayor, I, I'm so grateful that we have this new system, uh, you know, microphones and everything, um, I don't, I, I listened to a planning commission meeting recently, and I couldn't hear it. I, I'm, I mean, it's, it's not coming through for the recording loud enough to hear, and I think it's because of the microphones somehow, um, and tonight, I don't know how many times I didn't have my microphone on when I was supposed to and had it on when I wasn't supposed to, Charlie's lights up.
Mine? Yours does too.
I just didn't see any other ones lighting up along here, I see Steve's now, but, so we can, how many of us can have ours on at the same time? Can we just go with that?
Mine's on. I think it's four.
Four of us, okay. Is that the way it's always gonna be?
Yeah, that's the way the system was designed. Mine's always on, but, but Charles?
And?
And Caitlin's up.
And?
I don't, Amy said, oh. Yeah, what, what we have, I mean, we're gonna have to get used to it, if, if you're involved in the conversation, then leave yours on, if you're not, take yours off, you know, and, um, it's a little bit of a pain because you gotta reach around your laptop, I understand that, and, um, um, you know, we'll continue to try to tweak it. I'd be willing to bet, Sean Lee, that, uh- I'd be willing to bet Sean leave that the planning commission, Sean?
We have to say anything?
Okay.
This is training.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think we need to have it on just to say yes or no, because I don't think that should-
Are you picking it up on your recording, a yes and a no vote?
Yes.
Even though it's not on?
As long as you talk loud enough, it can normally pick it up most of the time.
Now, when you go do your minutes?
I'll find out in the morning.
Okay.
And when Diane's here, and now Caitlin, there's something unusual about the recording. I mean, I have trouble kind of hearing, maybe it's my ears, but.
Hearing the clerk?
Whoever's in that, on that microphone. I'm just having a little trouble hearing them.
Now, we'll tweak it some more. We'll keep tweaking it until we get it right. The video's great, you know, we just gotta work on the audio. Okay. All right, any other council member got anything to think good? How about a motion?
Somebody? Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinsons?
Yes.
Baxter?